What's up everyone? Welcome back to another episode of the eight one seven podcast where we talk everything from business, culture, trends, to anything you can think of going on in the city of Fort Worth and Tarrant County.
If you don't know what we talk about, welcome one, because I don't know how you got here. But at this point, I feel like we have a cohesive group of people who know that we are the high key podcast for anything Fort Worth. Uh, we read the news for you, give you some updates about what's going on and then give you some oftentimes good banter and oftentimes I wonder what we're doing. But Jimmy, uh, how's uh, how's life? I feel like it's been a week. You know, I was out of town all week in Birmingham, great city, by the way. Definitely feels more like a city than Fort Worth. I was there for a week, then I went to Kansas City for a speech. What have you been up to?
Not a ton. One of uh, my wife's cousins got his Eagle Scout yesterday, so he drove over to Richardson to celebrate with them, but uh, some of her family from Austin came up for it and just like talking with them about the state of Austin right now, still after the freeze, like they're just like, it's still so bad. And I feel like we are just not, I feel like no, nobody is sharing news about it or any news about it is getting significantly suppressed.
Yeah, like, isn't like the, like someone's getting nixed or has already been nixed, right? From the city officials, like they're like upset about how they handled all of it?
Yeah, I mean, what like Texas state government has always hated Austin. And so I don't know if it's like that surprising that they've turned a little bit of a blind eye to it, but yeah, people are pissed. I mean, they said, you know, they live in Lake Travis, they live in a nicer neighborhood, but they're like, yeah, like us as a neighborhood just had to decide to pay to have a truck come out and clean up all our debris because we knew it was going to be months before anything from the city was able to, to catch up and get out to us. They're just like, we still have downed limbs everywhere, like tons of public stuff isn't open because they haven't been able to clean it up yet. I just feel like we're not seeing any of that.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, it feels like our own little Palestine over here. No one's talking about it, you know?
That's the next question is, uh, how long until Fort Worth has a toxic train derail?
Yeah, right? I mean, yeah, I mean, they had, I mean, I wonder what affiliation would be in SF that, I mean, I mean, they run some, so much of it, I imagine so that there has to be affiliated in some capacity around that.
Yeah, I saw a recent article that said forty five thousand animals in the East Palestine area have died presumably from drinking the water. Uh, you know, it's one of those things that I don't think we will ever know the full impact on.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it's, it's, what's weird, it seems like there's news going on around. I mean, the international news is crazy, right? I mean, we just passed a year with the Russian Ukraine war. We got Turkey. I mean, one of my, one of my good friends from Fort Worth. She actually went out of, like she went on a trip to see friends in Turkey and landed the day after.
Oh my god.
So now she's just been like volunteering and I mean, she just seems to be, she's safe, but she seems to be like just blown away by all that. I mean, so there's, I mean, I guess, you know, you and I on a, on a pod today where we feel like the news was slow. I guess sometimes news is good to be slow. We're not, we're not having an earthquake, a war or a train and I, you know,
Yeah.
killing our animals. So, yeah, but we could, I mean, relatively, there's a lot to talk about, talk about. I know, um, the election's coming up. I'm excited. So you know what happens when we speak things into existence on the pod? It feels like it happens, you know, with, with interviews, with, uh, we have our first ever, I want to call it debate, I would call it a panel, candidate panel, we're gonna have the all, like at least four of the five have already approved to be on the district eleven panel. March twenty sixth, three eight one seven podcast. But like you could say that we have calendars accepted, you know, so Richard Herring, right? So there, there's one, Jeanette Martinez, Tara Wilson and Ricardo Vita would be already approved. And I feel like that's a fun district eleven. March twenty sixth, and I know that's our big story to talk about, so you know, we'll get more to that as well, but that, that was exciting.
Well, talking about city council members in uh, more somber news, uh, Councilman Carlos Flores's mother was shot in her North Side home this past week. Um, fortunately she did survive. She is at home with family recovering uh, after her time in the hospital and is stable. But she thought somebody was, she thought a family member was coming into the backyard and called out their name from the back door. And then heard a gunshot that uh, potentially was a stray bullet from the next yard, um, hit her in the abdomen at where she was taken to the hospital. Uh, thanks, thankfully she's stable and seems like they have the suspect in custody already.
Yeah, yeah. And uh, you know, Carlos Flores is district two and uh, he will, uh, does not have, he, he's an incumbent who doesn't have someone running in the race. So, you know, glad that he's able to really, I mean, also now super, super prioritize um, his family and his, and his mother and, and as a class act, he always is to the public, he was able to um, highlight our, our police force and people who were there to support. Uh, it seems like um, everything worked out for their family. But it's just crazy how close this stuff could really get. You think, you just see this stuff on the newspaper, you know, we, we, you know, what, what kind of stinks about being the accountability podcast? We might poo poo on Carlos Flores every now and then, but still we gotta remember, you know, these people are people, we're people. And at the end of the day, there's more stuff that brings us together, um, like family, um, that makes us connected and, 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 and want the best for everyone. So hope the Flores family is doing well and uh, that they're able to uh, get past this.
Well, moving on to uh, Fort Worth and business development, um, a report came out this week that shows that the retail real estate marking is, market is thriving even as rents increase. Fort Worth's retail real estate market was described as having ninety five point six percent of storefronts rented out in twenty twenty two, according to a report from real estate services firm Weitzman, uh, which was higher than most major Texas cities, including Houston, San Antonio and Dallas. You know, both of us thought this article was really interesting because that number does not line up with the reality that we see around town. And so the, you know, I, I looked through their report that's linked in the Star Telegram story and I, it doesn't do this, but I would love to see a breakdown geographically of where exactly where in the city like occupation looks best as well as what does occupation mean? Does that just mean that rent is being paid? Like the business closed, but they still owe rent until their lease is up, so they're still paying on it? Because when we look around town, like you look around Sundance Square, you look around West Seventh Area, uh, Magnolia and South Side.
I mean, the, the building where the Four Sisters is, I mean, look at this building. I mean, what's there?
Yeah, you see a ton of empty storefronts, closed businesses, especially um, closed small businesses. And even, even in the like Tom Thumb uh, area, like some of those brand new storefronts are, have turned over really quickly. Um, you see ones in the Montgomery Plaza that have been empty forever or are finally changing hands. You know, West Seventh has a number of empty storefronts. So the, I think the reason we wanted to highlight this story and talk about it is because the story being told around town, or at least in the urban core, doesn't match what this report says.
Yeah, um, it just, it just doesn't, to me, to me, what this sounds like is, you know, corporate real estate's down thirty percent and these people are getting paid to stop that from happening so that they can somehow make it feel like there's a demand. There's just no way. I mean, the same way with hotel occupancy, yes, are we having record revenue? Absolutely. But occupancy is not the same as it was pre pandemic. They're just charging more for rooms. So it's just, I, I don't, I don't see how this works, but and then you're also seeing, looking at um, the, they're changing some of the realty, real, real estate in the uh, Montgomery Plaza area to livable places. And I think you're gonna see what's, what's really interesting is downtowns and realist, uh, retail spaces be converted to livable spaces. Because there's a lot of data coming out now how three days uh, in the office instead of five is changing the game of how people live their lives.
Yeah.
So um,
Yeah, and even like we look around, uh, the building that's referenced in the story off of South Main that is residential, that wanted to have retail on the bottom floor, like it uh, pivoted and it has converted that or is converting that into more residential because the cost of having retail wasn't going to make enough for them. Triple nets, which is basically an addition to rent. So when you are, uh, if you're a small business or, you know, just a business, you're leasing space, you will have your base rent and then you'll have triple nets, which is a variable, typically variable year to year that, you know, covers landscaping, upkeep, all of that. I honestly like if you're not savvy, a number of corporate real estate uh, offices will try and slide a lot of things into those triple net costs that don't necessarily belong there. Not saying that from experience or anything, uh, but that's increased from around eight dollars per square foot per year to around twelve dollars, which is a significant increase. Um, I mean, that's, that's massive for a small business, one year to be paying, say, twenty five hundred dollars a month in rent to all of a sudden paying thirty one, thirty two hundred dollars a month in rent.
Where, where, where this does, where I see from like just behavioral feels like it's true, there's a lot more people out in Fort Worth. This is my second weekend going out and things are full.
Yeah, parking downtown, you can't park downtown street anymore. Like it's hard to find a spot.
So like the part that, you know, if we're gonna give the other side of that, you know, spacing, like there definitely seems like there's people outside more than usual.
Yeah.
I was at the usual last night and the busiest I've ever seen the usual.
Yeah, I just see the places that I see like a hundred percent occupancy are the ones that are like, you know, Target and Five Below and every, Michael's, like those stores aren't closing or going anywhere, but then you see, you know, Four Sisters closing, Black Cat Pizza closing, Arcadia Coffee closing, and the businesses next door to those have kind of taken over those spaces, but those are still.
The label moved out of that across the street.
Yeah. Like those are still spaces where we're losing small businesses. Um, and I, I feel like we're losing a lot of headcount of local locally driven businesses and a lot of them are being replaced by more like corporate uh, chainy brands. And it just feels like Fort Worth is at a pivot point right now, culture wise, where it is losing a little bit of that small business culture that it had for so long.
Oh yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I never go to Tom Thumb area, but I had to get something notarized and I was like, there's a Buffalo Wild Wings back here? Like what the heck is going on? But yeah, so I mean, there's a lot to talk about, but we're gonna, let's go ahead and dive into like infrastructure as a whole. Um, so the next story we have here. On February twentieth, Sandra Sadek, a reporter at Fort Worth Report, wrote a story about how Panther Island gets Fort Worth's biggest share of infrastructure funding. The Panther Island Project is Fort Worth's largest recipient of federal funding from the bipartisan infrastructure law, receiving four hundred and three million dollars after years of delay and political pushback. Officially known as the Central City Flood Control Project, it's among several projects in Tarrant County and Fort Worth that receive money from the historic one trillion bill tackling transportation, climate resiliency and broadband issues. Uh, Trinity Metro also got thirty six point four million. Um, major projects funded for obviously roads and bridges. Tarrant County has already received over five hundred seven million in funding from the infrastructure law to help fund about a dozen road projects over the next ten years, according to North Central Texas Council Governments. However, more opportunities for funding could come up in the future. I also know there's things being talked about locally. Where our airport getting an uplift, all three of Fort Worth airports, Alliance, Meacham and Spinks received funding from the bill in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. I mean, if you look at those numbers, it's, it's going to be majority the Panther Island Project and then roads and bridges to probably get to the Panther Island Project.
Yeah, I mean, locally Biden and the Democrats will never get the credit they deserve for funding all of these projects, like this, when we talk about the future of Fort Worth, like it's talking about Panther Island and it's talking about Texas A and M downtown. And Panther Island does not happen without this infrastructure bill. Like the crux of the city's future economic development is thanks to what was passed uh, last year now. Um, so I mean, when we're, when one project's getting four hundred million dollars uh, from the bill, I'm glad that anything else got anything, you know, like they're spreading that money across the entire country, so.
The Trinity Metro gets a little bit of uh, crumbs here.
I wish that Trinity Metro were getting more, but at least they're, they're getting something to uh, you know, help continue with the, the upkeep of that.
Yeah, but you know, some, some, someone said that was really powerful, um, that I heard in a discussion was Fort Worth acts like it's a conservative town and that we don't spend money. And then he just kind of said, but we're trying to pit an island in the middle of our downtown and spending tons of money to do it. So don't tell me that we're this like conservative, we don't spend money, uh, city, county or whatever. He's like, we're trying to pit an island in the middle of our city. Tell me how that's conservative. And I was like, man, when you talk about how much of our decisions that Fort Worth are faced with right now was made with a pre pandemic consciousness. Like now, the world is just different. I mean, things that you thought were going to be retail, things that you thought were gonna be office spaces. Everything's gonna, you think that everyone's answer is gonna be, it has to be residential. And yes, are people moving to Fort Worth? Yes, are, are we, could we occupy those spaces? But I just have a hard time believing that all these retail people, uh, real estate people think that, oh, we can just turn all of this stuff in the living spaces, residential and charge premium for it? And not think that you're gonna have to go down on, on price. I just don't think like this, like this attachment to like continuing to raise prices for things. Um, I just imagine that eventually like, how are you gonna fund people to live at the, at Panther Island? That one seems possible, but then all this stuff happened in downtown. You just talked about the area over by Montgomery. I just, it's gonna be interesting that even once it is all funded, how do we then maintain rents? Residents to actually live there?
Yeah, we haven't seen a lot of affordable housing discussion recently, um, which I, I feel like is somewhat of a red flag. I mean, really since that, uh, I think it's Cielo Place over off of Race Street, the church that was converted into affordable housing, like really since then, I feel like we have not seen much in the way of affordable housing, uh, talk coming along. And it, it's interesting here too, that like rents are very similar to what they are in Dallas. Yet house prices aren't. And I, I feel like Fort Worth, Fort Worth's housing market still has a lot of room to grow. To where people are priced out of the market, so it will continue to grow as people feel like they can't buy in Dallas and they can either work from home or commute like two days a week over there, yet rents have already kind of made that leap. And so I agree with you, as more and more is built, where is the conversation on these being affordable units? Because we, that's what we need to be focused on.
Well, it just, right? If you, if we even just look at right, supply and demand, okay. Obviously this wasn't a good business model to you, to people pre pandemic, so you made them office spaces. Now you realize a third of people are still working from home, right? Who decided to do that, right? It was like five percent. Now thirty percent is working from home. So now you're like, okay, let's go build residential. Now that it's, you go to your bee plant, you're basically throwing a Hail Mary because we're desperate. And now all this building downtown, but now you're gonna have all these families showing up, people showing up. And I just don't see them being like, oh wow, look at all these great places downtown that I want to live and raise my family or have my kid at. And then one thing, it's a premium situation. Like this whole idea of premium downtown spaces really would only work if you're bringing in some young professionals who have to live, who have to then also work there, which there's no one working downtown. I just, and, and then I think you look across, this is not just a Fort Worth issue, like this is everywhere, like man, I, I read that story on Bloomberg about Manhattan losing twelve billion dollars. And they're showing the data of like public trans rides into the city for work on Mondays and Friday compared to like Wednesday through Thursday. I mean, Wednesday, uh, Tuesday through Thursday. They're talking about Manhattan's losing twelve billion dollars for three day work weeks, uh, rather than five. And like, I just, to just assume that, oh, we just turned these into residential and then charge a premium because it's downtown. I just don't know, I, I think if you, if we could be the city that discounts that, so now people are using their dollars to live and spend money in the area. I just don't know how we're gonna have people buy these things.
Yeah, especially when you talk about families, like we don't have the school system downtown to attract people there. Or even just a school that like you can get to downtown, that like services downtown very well at all. Yeah, we, we don't necessarily have the uh, density of, I mean, there's like Third Street Market, there's a couple of markets down there now. Like I think you could figure out a grocery situation if you wanted to live car free.
But people don't come to Fort Worth to do that.
Right, exactly. That's the, it clashes with the culture that Fort Worth has set for itself, which is to buy yourself a slight, a, you know, slightly bigger lot than you'd be able to buy in another big city, uh, and kind of, you know, make your own empire here.
And you know where people are working? Like we said, Alliance, Texas, South Lake, Mansfield, they're working over there. So who's gonna go live in downtown Fort Worth? For what? You know, the only reason you would have to be affordable because it's also smaller units. It was just, I, I just, even when I look at condo prices, because sometimes I'm like, man, it'd be dope to have a little, maybe something more downtown, but there's no way, it's worth more than buying a house. I'm like, I'm, there's no way I will buy a condo downtown rather than a house. And I think that's, people are lost in their sauce and I don't know how they're, 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 they're figuring out to make this sustainable, but we'll see.
So something that we've talked about plenty over the last few years and Fort Worth has talked about since the Race and Culture Task Force, it feels like decades ago, but I think it was twenty seventeen. Um, Fort Worth advocates want more police oversight, but said, say the chief's new plan isn't enough. This past week, uh, Chief Noakes at um, the city council meeting laid out the plan for a proposed aversion of the civilian oversight board, um, that some city leaders and activists say lacks the independence needed for true police oversight and reform. Um, Noakes said the, so a few months ago, the city council voted against a different version of the board. Um, Noakes said the difference with his proposed community advisory board is that it brings the community and police department together to create long lasting solutions for Fort Worth. But council members and community leaders seem taken aback by the chief's proposal, especially because Noakes announced he had already selected thirteen of nineteen possible board members.
Yeah. Gina Bivin said this work session is a slap in the face uh, of the members of color on the council have been strategically left out of this process. Carlos Flores told us to our telegram, it seems solid, but it, but it needs some workshopping.
You know who got a check before they walked into the council meeting and who didn't from the uh,
Yeah, and shout, yeah, yeah, yeah. The shout out to, uh, to Pamela Young, uh, who's, you know, the, a part of United Fort Worth is, um, I mean, they've really been the, the organizers and the committed people really rising up against uh, the police brutality. And uh, I mean, really a lot of depth in this story. So also shout out to uh, I think Kaylee, I think she wrote this one. But Pamela just kind of talked about like her expectation of what she was doing and how what she even gave to them. She was like, this was trash. This was not even what we wanted. We just like knew, like we had to get something there that maybe would consider that they would take it and we didn't. And what we need to know is that our three black uh, city council members voted yes for it, plus Elizabeth Beck, the others voted no. And so now you're in this like weird stuck area where like Noakes is now saying like, you know, let me do it inside and, 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 and he's getting like some, I mean, I know these, these, these people on the board. Um, they're, they're, they're solid people, but even Estress Tucker, one of the people on it, he's like, look, I still think we need a community uh, oversight board that's independent, even though he was asked to be on this, on this um, committee. It just, it just shows how, I don't know, like it's just powerful police are in Fort Worth. It just continues to show. Um, and you know, you try to show that you care, but do you really want that? I mean, this is what equity is all about. Like it's giving up powers and giving um, the people more, more, more say, not that you control the table and the chess pieces and then say, okay, watch us, but I'm still in control.
Yeah, and I think when the chief Noakes was first appointed to the position, I think he came out pretty hot with like saying that you know, Fort Worth needed some change. He fired a number of officers uh, who were having issues. And it, now he's kind of like taking the step back. He, he's kind of fallen more in line with what we expect of a Fort Worth police chief, which is just kind of uh, maintaining the status quo, maintaining the, the Fort Worth way. Um, and so him coming, even if there is good intent behind him already having selected two thirds of the board, you're still coming forth and saying, hey, look at this board that I handpicked. It's, you know, going to be integrated with the police department. It, it just feels a little bit more disingenuous. And you know, feels like there's a lot of behind the curtain things happening that are the opposite of what you want with some sort of oversight board.
Yeah, and, and I think it was Nettles in here who also kind of mentioned, and, and to me, it kind of gave an idea of like, could, could there, could there be some type of workaround or I don't know, almost like why does, why does the police department not have a school board like situation? Right? If, if you have that for education, which goes to our tax dollars and it pays to pitch our young talent and make them economically viable. If the police office gets even more tax dollars and they have to turn criminals, whatever the, the name you want to call victims or, you know, whatever the case, there are people who've done something wrong and get them back to society or allowed them to pay their dues for their punishment. It seems like why do we not have a school board kind of field? There's districts, someone gets hired by the district, they work as close with the city council members to keep in their districts, like Nettles gets one, Jared gets one, and they work together, they look at the numbers of their districts, what are the crime rates, what are this? They report back, they have meetings with Noakes and the police department and like the city can play kind of middleman to like a community nominated like board member, like why, that doesn't seem that difficult.
No, and it seems in like, like they say that they want long-term solutions for the community. They say they want to do things to help the community feel comfortable with the police department, but then the moment you suggest something like that, you're, you know, radical, even though it totally lines up with what they say they want. It makes a lot of sense, like why should we not have better oversight over the thing that the vast majority of our tax dollars go to?
Yeah, it, it's so crazy how much we talk about T E A and state testing and attendance and like we talk about teacher shortages, like why don't we talk about there, for every education story about accountability, there should be a mirroring one about police, because there's police shortages, there's.
I mean, overtime abuse, yeah.
Like grades and, and. Like grades and, and outcomes and like, they are similar institutions for different reasons. But it's about um people and empowering people to improve from young people to people who made mistakes. Like, we should have a much more dialogue about police the same way we see about education, that's all. But obviously.
But saying something simple and logical like that makes you radical.
You know, hey, good thing we're never running for anything though. So, alrighty, so let's go ahead and move into the big story, the big story. Are about the 30 candidates running for Fort Worth City Council. We've mentioned this several times, this was in Fort Worth Report, February 17th. Emily Wolf and Rachel. Barrett, Barrett, Bevrent? Kind of ran this story. And it gives insight, so Jimmy, I'm gonna let you kinda go down, you kinda try to find some websites. And try to find who was running.
It, it seems like there's some rule that they're not allowed to have a website up yet, I'm like. Far too many of you don't have a website or haven't done anything to try and search engine optimize getting it on the front page of Google.
Please tell me you've seen the Mattie Parker ads around like walkable green.
I laughed so hard, I laughed so hard.
Every time I see those, I'm like, I wonder what Jimmy's thinking right now.
I, it makes me laugh a lot. Because you have done nothing to try and improve that these last two years. But I mean, when you're gonna be so much better funded than these other four candidates, like you can just make shit up like that. And toss it on an ad and be like, yeah, that looks nice.
Yeah, no, no, I, I saw that and I was like, man, this is, this is, this is good, but go ahead, what you got?
Yeah, so Mayor Mattie Parker is the incumbent in the mayoral race and she has four people running against her. First is Adrian Smith, who is a veteran. Allison Kennedy, who is an activist who also ran in 2020 as. A member of the Socialist Workers Party. And then Jennifer Castillo, who is an entrepreneur and a realtor. And then last is Ken Bowens Jr., who is an entrepreneur. Honestly, a lot of these people, it was kind of hard to. Find much information on. Castillo is uh currently is part of the Fort Worth Hispanic Chamber and is currently attending. The TCU Neely School of Business for, I believe, her MBA. Adrian Smith is a veteran. Ken Bowens Jr. Ken Bowens Jr. Is often somebody that we hear at city council meetings. So I, you know, I, I would love if Fort Worth Report as. People get websites up and running would um update this with. The websites they can find, uh because Ballotopedia and uh, you know, just Google. Failed me in a lot of ways uh for tracking down more information on these candidates.
I, I mean, I'm loving the uh. The, the candidate who ran for president as well.
Yeah, Allison Kennedy, yeah, yeah, was a 20, was ran for president in 2020 as part of the uh. Socialist Workers Party. So I don't, you know, maybe she has a little bit of funding behind. That, or at least has a little bit of a following in a party, um but I think. I would guess that Mayor Parker is going to outfund all four of them combined. But we'll try, we'll do our best to see if we can get some of them on to talk to them and hear, hear their pitches as well. District four, which will be a new. Which will be a new council member because Alan Blaylock, his new district that he is running for is District 10. Uh, so we've got two people there, Charles Lowersdorf and Teresa Ramirez Gonzalez. Ramirez Gonzalez describes herself as a conservative Christian. And Charles Lowersdorf is a uh business owner, it looks like he does. Media for real estate listings and um is a senior intelligence analyst in the US Marine Corps Reserve. Graduated with a master's in business administration from TCU in 2019. Was deployed as active duty military five times. So those are, those two will be battling it out for District four. Gonzalez has served with Fort Worth PD, the Neighborhood Crime Watch Program as a volunteer for over five years and is a member. Of the Neighborhood Crime Watch Steering Committee. Then District five, we've got Bob Willoughby, which if you follow city council meetings, you know Bob Willoughby. He, he's there all the time. His description on the Fort Worth Report website is frequent speaker at city meetings. Then incumbent Gina Bivins is running again, and then last is William McKinley Jackson, who is. A pastor at Samaria Baptist Church. Has degrees in biblical studies from DBU and a master's from Houston Graduate School of Theology and doctorate from. Memphis Theological Seminary, so Dr. William McKinley Jackson. So those three will be running for District five, which is a district that really didn't change geographically a ton in. The new redistricting. District six, incumbent Jared Williams, uh who we had on the pod a few weeks ago. Is running against Italia De La Cruz, who is a small business owner and uh. Her Facebook tagline is like, America, God, guns. So that uh. Kinda threw me off. It was different than how the Fort Worth Report described her, I will say, to say the least. But. She says, let's restore our quality of life, lower taxes, support small businesses and live it, limit the overreach of city government. And then last is Tanya Carter, who is a customer service worker, she is a Como resident and former candidate for District three. But now because of rearranging, she's in District six. She runs a Facebook page called Como Action News Today. She said, I know how to take a little bit of nothing and turn it into a whole lot of something, that's what qualifies me for District six. She seems like a really interesting person to talk to. District seven, I believe we mentioned Jacob, Jason Ellis, when he filed a few weeks ago. Uh, there's also Caleb Backholm, who's an insurance agent and Macy Hill, who is a philanthropic advisor. She's the president of Tailwind Philanthropic Advisors, which is a wealth management company. And serves on several boards, including the Board of Visitors for TCU's Adran College of Liberal Arts and the Cowtown Marathon. Which shout out, that was this weekend. If you tried to go anywhere downtown on Sunday, you probably had a horde of runners uh blocking your way.
I know Firestone has, when you look at Macy Hill's donations, is the Firestone family.
They're putting it behind Macy Hill.
I mean, so of that crew. If of the like ones that don't have, I mean, it seems like to me the incumbents are gonna be fine, but the number four, number. Seven, I mean Macy Hill and it's probably who's gonna get that and then Charles, I mean.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see who um some of the, we see some of the establishment go behind because. Four, even though this is all nonpartisan, quote unquote, four looks like two conservatives running against each other, seven looks like. Three conservatives running against each other. And then I, I believe 10, which is Blaylock against Brandon Jones, who's a home inspector. Unless I was reading, well, there's not much information on Jones, so I won't say there. But District nine, I skipped over Elizabeth Beck, the incumbent is running, uh Chris Reed, who is a software developer. Is running as well, he was the one who created the petition urging the city to save the swimming pool in Forest Park. So he, you know, is a local activist and is someone who. You'll definitely, you've definitely seen around the city before. Jason Peña is a small business owner, he says, I am running for city council because I no longer recognize the city I grew up in. I'll fight to reduce crime, decrease taxes and take on the radical politicians that have crippled this city. No word on who those radical politicians are. And then last is Pamela Bogis, Bogis, I'm not sure if it's a hard G or not. Who has previously run for judge in Tarrant County's 302nd District Court. Uh, and has previously, previously worked as an assistant criminal district attorney, where she specialized in prosecuting. Child sexual abuse and gangs. So those are the four in District nine. And then District 11, which like EJ said earlier, will have a roundtable on, right now is Christopher Johnson, Jeanette Martinez, Ricardo. Avicia, Rick Herring and Tara Maldonado Wilson. Who we've had on the pod a couple of times, having, having previously run for District four. Then the three incumbents that are running unopposed are District two, Carlos Flores, District three, Michael Crane and District eight, Chris Nettles.
Which to me isn't, like to me, that's crazy. Like, cause one, these are very active districts. And so the fact that they got, they have, they don't have anyone is very interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I think like. I would imagine people look at District three and are kind of like, I'm not gonna beat Michael Crane. Maybe that's even how some people in District two are feeling, I mean, the way that it, it was redrawn, kind of like took some of the people that. Ran against him before out of the picture, and so, I mean, I think we saw people with fairly good funding. Two years ago in District two, just really not even hold a flame to Carlos Flores, so that might have. Dissuaded some people. District eight's the surprising one to me, like Nettles didn't win by much. Last time, even though he wasn't an incumbent at that point. But District eight also got shifted around where like we. Were voting for Nettles last time, we're in District 11 now, so. It might have also taken some of the people that uh were more active and slid them into. District 11 where we see five, potentially up to seven people running.
Yeah, yeah, we've got some people that need to make sure their records are good, that's trying to join number 11. But I'm excited, March 26th, District 11, uh panel discussion, candidate highlights. We'll ask them the tough questions, hear their voices, get to use our, our pod as, as an opportunity to really, uh. I feel like what really made our pod was that we had long discussions with each candidate as mayor. Uh, that one, you know, when they were running and like that really took us. To credibility, because people, I mean, the amount of people I've heard say, I use this as a source to decide who I was gonna vote for. Was, was, was cool, so like if we could do that for District 11, I think that's awesome.
Yeah, especially in a year where I think we're probably look, I, I will be optimistic. To say we hit like 7% voter turnout.
Wanna move the wins and losses?
Yeah, I'll start with my loss, uh this week, the Election Integrity Task Force was. Indoctrinated, I guess, or um the Tarrant County Commissioners Meeting officially. Like formed the. Election Integrity Task Force earlier this month to prioritize prosecution of election crimes, which. Are rare in Tarrant County and across the country. Thank you, Fort Worth Report, for. Highlighting the ridiculousness of this. A recent state audit praised the quality and transparency of Tarrant County elections and. One of the Democratic members of the court said, I'm concerned that we are enshrining in our Tarrant County infrastructure. The ability to deny the results of any election that the three of you, meaning the three people that voted for it on the court. Take exception to, that's a problem for me. And that's what I want to echo, is that we. Should not be. Enshrining and lifting up the Looney Tunes who keep pushing election denial. I appreciate Bill Wayburn said Joe Biden's the president, I was like, there you go buddy. But I think it is a problem that Tarrant County continues to put a spotlight. On the people peddling these claims when there is nothing to point to. Their credibility or the need for something like this, so. I mean, they said in the. Past week, they've received 12 complaints. Precinct two commissioner said 12 complaints don't necessitate a task force and. Of those 12 complaints, I'm gonna step out on a limb and say zero of them have any sort of uh credibility. And now you're kind of giving a place for people to. Spin everyone's wheels, waste county time, county resources on. Digging into these things that do not have credibility, so that's my loss.
Yeah, my, my loss is similar, um staying on the Tarrant County. Uh leadership scene, uh Tarrant County uh removed employees uh bias and security training. Training on harassment, workplace security and unconscious bias is now an optional training for Tarrant County employees. Commissioners voted 3-2 Tuesday to make the training voluntary after several Republican public officials spoke out against the program. So um my loss is um obviously um that we are not, I mean, Bill Wayburn was a part of this. Um, and again, unfortunately, when y'all talk about Cowtown and Cowboys, I mean, does Bill Wayborn wear a cowboy hat?
Oh, yeah.
Interesting, huh, interesting, huh, interesting.
I think he invented them.
Right, like symbolic, interesting, but hey, we all need to be cowboys. Alright, so I mean, like at the end of the day, this is just a loss because, I mean, you know what's sad about? This is, you know, for Mr. Wayborn and Mr. O'Hare is like, your, your white kids. Are growing up in a world where they are a minority, if you have kids under 18, uh your, your white kid is a minority in America. Alright, so uh that means you better learn how to hang out, build kids who know how to navigate, walk. Support and be a part of non-white spaces. If all your kid does is hang out with white kids in white communities and then does not have biased training. You're, you're, you're limiting your kid's ability to thrive um when they're adults. So go ahead and um, you know, just really be thoughtful of like why, uh what kind of bias comes, you know. Around like, we all have biases and so like, I, I just think like this is, you know, disappointing that we're, it's a loss because. You're, you're hiring a bunch of people extremely fast, you're taking really any soul to be a police officer and then not allowing them to. Get training, uh especially after a Tatiana Jefferson, you know, especially after all this stuff, it just seems uh. You know, siding with the radical right where now everything, it's now DEI is a problem, you know, you've seen that as a state thing. And uh O'Hare is trying to be mini Ron DeSantis, so.
Yeah, and the other loss with this is that doing stuff like this gets you votes, which tells us about the state of Tarrant County. My win, bringing it over to the east side of Fort Worth, uh first Paycom. Shout out to Paycom, an Oklahoma city based company with an office in Grapevine donating $50,000 to the National Juneteenth Museum. They had a little ceremony over there this past week. You said. Yeah, you said before the pod, as we came on, like where's, where's the Fort Worth companies with their $50,000 checks?
I know, you hear that Hillwood, you hear that, all those uh alliance companies, you hear that uh Golf Capital, right? Yeah, all like, you know, here's, why does uh Paycom from Oklahoma City gotta, gotta give to a. To the National Juneteenth Museum, but we're not seeing the same uh, go ahead and just match it, that's not a big, that, that's, that's, that's secretary money, just, you know, you guys just. Go ahead and, go ahead and match it for, 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 for us.
Yeah, so win, uh shout out to Paycom for that and the ceremony they had this past week. And then also um Fort Worth Broadcast Hill, which is part of Tandy Hills Park. Received a $150,000 grant that will speed up the makeover of the area. I walked over to your house this morning, I walked by Tandy Hills and like. You know, the signs designating the paths are like impossible to see, like it's not even a surprise that. People very often stray from the path and accidentally kill plant life that is there. Because you can barely see the paths, you can barely see the signs, then half the signs are cardboard and torn in half. Because, you know, we don't really invest in our parks and we don't really invest in East Fort Worth.
If I was a rich person, which I am not. But if I was. I would buy, there's, there's all this like acres around Tandy. Uh, I think I would buy all of it and I would expand Tandy to be. A world-class walkable nature park in the city. When you drive on I-30 from your. walkable nature park in the city. When you drive on I-30 from your neighborhood in West Fort Worth, let's just go where the, where the central market is, and you drive from that central market into downtown, you hit the zoo, you hit the university, you hit Papa Do's, and then you get to downtown. And you drive all the way from downtown, all the way past Beach and Oakland. And I want you to see the difference. And all you see is trees and land. Somebody take what Tandy has and expand a walkable nature area. Cause it's right there in the city. It could be beautiful. It could be awesome. It could be extended. We could feel more like an Austin in the sense of having some type of nature-ish inside the loop. That's what I would do. But sorry, I'm not rich.
Yeah. Could you imagine, uh, putting a like walkable bridge across 30 to connect that
To the river.
Land to the river?
Yep.
Man.
And then just think about the dirt trails. You could have, you know, mountain, you could, you could take your dog. I mean, heck, you could almost get near, close enough to, uh, what's the, our brewery over here? You know, you could almost get close enough to that.
Wildacre.
The Wildacre. So now you got Wildacre, you gotta walk its pathway. I mean, we could have a true nature route, um, in the city.
Yeah. But my, you know, my win is that this $150,000 is going to do a lot to connect the paths in Tandy Hills, give us some better signage, help preserve the natural wildlife that is there. Um, if you haven't made it over to Tandy Hills, it's an amazing space. If you walk off the trails, I can almost guarantee that someone from the neighborhood will come scream at you. Like, the people on that, we, the people on the street are watchdogs and they are out there and they are ready to make sure that you take care of the wildlife that is there. Um, but yeah, I know who owns all that land. He, uh, owns the lots at the end of our street also and keeps trying to package it all as one deal. I think he's got it listed for like 1.2 million dollars. He's a, he is a character, to say the least.
Yep. Well, sorry, you know, you know, maybe try to give me like 20 years, maybe one day. Alright, so, um, my win, I'm just gonna go, cause a lady reached out to me, um, about, um, she's a private practice colon and rectal surgeon, and she's collaborating with Funky Piggy to throw the first ever colon cancer cook-off Sunday, March 5th. Uh, the premise behind the event is a friendly competition amongst area chefs following dietary guidelines associated with decreased risk of colorectal cancer. There will be colorectal themed trivia with prizes and anonymous Q and A with area physicians and healthcare providers. The proceeds will benefit the Colon Cancer Coalition. Uh, her hope is it to become an annual event. Um, there will be links in the description. Uh, she shared with me some data around, um, how a lot of this could be met if we increased, um, our, uh, I just getting tested and checking in and doing what we should do as adults, um, that we could prevent this kind of cancer impacting our lives. And so, um, the goal is also just like with Tarrant County's numbers and rates, um, around screenings. She wants to see us boost those rates, um, because they're low among other cities, uh, and counties. And, uh, so shout out to her for putting on a, an event and trying to make a, a discussion that's uncomfortable or maybe hard to talk about and spin it with some Funky Piggy, some chefs and doing some great things. So that's on Sunday. Uh,
Do you think they'll have colon shaped cookies there? Rectal shaped cookies there?
Will you eat them is my question? Uh, but anyways, beautiful people, that'd be, you know, let's see what happens. So, uh, uh, thanks for being on the pod and, uh, thank you. If you guys have any other shout outs, you know, um, that things are happening in the city that you guys want to be a win or a loss, you know, if, if, if that makes sense, we're happy to do so. Um, thank you for listening to this pod. Would love to know your thoughts and, and, and ideas. A lot's happening and we're here to try to do our best to, uh, uh, share the news and, uh, of this awesome city we call home.
Thanks for listening and we'll see you next week.